Okay. So I'd like to call this regular council meeting to order. For the record, today is Monday, October 21st. We have members of the city council attending in person and via Zoom. So for the record, participating in person is Councilwoman Ivene, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Rouette. And participating via Zoom, I have Councilman Cavanero, Councilwoman Waldron, and Councilwoman Oliver. So it is a full board. Before we, it is now 6:45 PM before we get into the agenda. Could we kindly stand and pledge the flag? All right, jumping right into the agenda. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ivene, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council at this time? And they all look like familiar faces, so I'm going to move on to item two. I will entertain a motion to accept the public hearing and regular meeting minutes from October 7th, 2024.
Don't move.
Second.
I heard Councilwoman Ivene, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item three, I will, this doesn't really need a motion, but for purposes of controlling the discussion, I'll entertain a motion to open the public to our Economic Development Director, William Wallach, for presentation and discussion on economic development updates.
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Rouette. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. A couple, I have three items here, and I'll just kind of go through them. I'll start with the first one, which is just update to several of the projects that we have going throughout the city of Torrington. A few council meetings ago, Councilmember Ivene requested data on the brownfields throughout the city of Torrington. So I pulled a couple of sources, one being an internal source that had been collected over time in the Economic Development Office. The second source is from the DEEP website. This is the more comprehensive, up-to-date of what's been inventoried for the purposes of identifying either through EPA, the state of Connecticut through DEEP, or locally through accessing funds, either through the state of Connecticut or other funds, the NVCOG, or which would be federal funds or directly through the EPA, through like an RLF grant. So I provided that to the council members. If you have any questions, I can happily answer questions or go back and get more information as well. I also have a list of DECD-funded projects that are throughout the city of Torrington, and I can go through them just kind of wave top level. And if you have any specific questions, feel free to interrupt at any point or jump in at the end. First is Torrington Business Park. Torrington Business Park, the city received a $2 million grant, which was effective from January 2021. That $2 million grant was to abate and demolish the building structures at the 70 North Street property. And to date, almost all the building structures have been brought to the ground, and the hazardous materials have been abated. You can see on the document that I provided about, nearly 97% of the state funds have been expended for the developer funds, though it's indicated that it's around 11%, I believe in the document. I did some updates today, so mine may not reflect exactly what yours is. The brownfield portion of the developer funds is nearly 100% as well. An important reason why I bring both of those up is because the developer IRG has notified the city of Torrington that they would like to request some supplemental funds from DECD. The nature of those supplemental funds is to cover an overage in the budget. The overage of the budget is due to the change in scope. The original scope was just to abate two of the buildings, 21 and 24. In July, DECD authorized IRG to demolish buildings 21 and 24, which caused a change in the overall budget of the project. So I have that to the mayor to submit to DECD. The change, or the supplemental fund request would be the amount of $200 and approximately $90,000. The process for that is that DECD would either authorize or not authorize that overage, which is eligible under the general statutes to request up to 50% of the original grant amount. So we're still within that budget. Based on my experience, I think it's a reasonable request, and we'll just wait to hear back from DECD whether they're going to provide supplemental funds or not. If not, I'll just go back to IRG and figure out another path to continue the project moving forward. Next one is Sophia Building. At least on my list is Sophia Building, sorry if I'm out of order. This is a $1.4 million grant. It's tied with the Railroad Square project from DECD. The Sophia Building portion of the project is really on schedule. It's executed $472,000 of the redevelopment and construction costs. Those $472,000 of those, the first two payment requests have been reimbursed for just under $200,000. And DECD is evaluating and going through the process of reimbursing them. Next two payment requests. The developer has put in over $350,000 of his own funds so far, and that's not including some pre-development expenses as well. Projects on schedule, potentially opening the units as early as this spring. Seventeen new units for downtown Torrington. The sidewalk construction is the second part of that project. The sidewalk construction actually started today, and that's expected to be wrapped up this fall or very, very early winter for the sidewalk construction portion. That's also a DECD-funded portion of the project. Next, I have Vinnie's Restaurant. Again, sorry if I'm out of order, jumping a couple of these, just reviewing my own notes. The Vinnie's Restaurant is a $1 million DECD grant for the brownfield remediation. So this was awarded in 2021 in January, and this one's been a little bit slow getting off the ground, but now we've picked up a lot of traction. We have a hazardous building material abatement contract for Enviro Consultants out of Danbury. They are actively at the site. They've completed their mobilization. They've started the abatement process. The abatement process is to remove asbestos and lead materials within the building structure. That is the first step. That will allow the LEP to go in, complete some final assessment work to figure out the breadth and depth of more of the contaminants, and that will put the city of Torrington in a position to put out another RFP to procure a remediation firm to complete the remediation of the project. That RFP, pending on a couple of factors, we intend to publish in January, February timeframe, get a contractor in place by end of March, complete the remediation work April, May, which will enable the property owner to start the construction of the banquet facility and commercial spaces by June of 2025. No funds have been expended from, oh, sorry, $63,000 of the funds have been expended. That's just for hazardous building material. The abatement contract is for $222,400. The next project is the Embracing Our Legacy Project. The Embracing Our Legacy is a brownfield planning project. It's a $200,000 grant from DECD, of which the city has a $20,000 matching requirement. That $20,000 matching requirement has been expended. It went towards the environmental review and also towards the market analysis that's been completed. Right now, for the DECD grant portion, we've completed $137,900. We have one of our final committee meetings, this, the 23rd, which is Wednesday. The Gamble Associates is coming to Torrington. We're doing a two-hour planning meeting and figuring out the final steps of this planning project to wrap up the 535 Mijin Ave and the North Parcel planning project. That planning project has actually been very helpful because the city council just recently approved the city to apply for a $200,000 assessment grant for the Brunswick factory in the North Parcel, of which we did submit that application September 30th. Yes.
So I think it must be just an error for Vinnie's Restaurant. That project description is referencing water in Church Street, which is in the next one.
Very likely an error on my part. Apologies for that.
No, just to note, I mean, it would be good to know what the project description is.
I will all update that and get them back.
Okay. All right, and you know, the reasons why it's sort of delayed at this point. I've been sort of watching it.
For Vinnie's?
Yeah.
Sure, so the reason it was delayed, there's a couple of factors. I can go into that real quick. One is my, there was a gap in the time that, between my predecessor leaving the city of Torrington and me coming onboard, that was just a factor.
Yeah.
Another was the, it takes time to put together the RFP. When I came onboard here in June, the RFP was in a draft status, and that's, I think, being generous to the word draft. But that was my first priority when I came onboard. Between coming onboard in June 3rd, we published the RFP July 2nd. So that was a huge priority of mine, to get that project up to speed and get it moving forward. I think we're not going to make up all the time that has been lost, but we're aggressively moving forward. The property owner has expressed a satisfaction, gratification that we're moving the project forward at the speed we are.
I noticed there's like a "for lease" sign on it. Is this a discussion?
So that's a good question. I could talk about that if you'd like. There is a "for lease" sign. That, that was for the property owner because he has a second and third floor that he plans to lease out as well. He's acquired a business, a commercial business, to occupy either the second or third floor. That was the reason for the "for lease" sign. I think that that has been fulfilled, though, and the signs just not been taken down. I'll update the project description. Thanks for catching on that. Next, I have Hotchkiss Square. Hotchkiss Square is a $1.5 million grant from DECD. This is in 2022. This is another one that's been just kind of slow getting off the ground. It's been a priority of mine to aggressively bring it to fruition so that the Peter LLC gets somebody in there to do the abatement and demolition work. They've acquired American Environmental Incorporated out of Massachusetts. They're a firm that works throughout the state of Connecticut. And they are onsite mobilizing right now. They are in the process of getting the permits for demolition, the permits for turning off the water and turning off the other utilities so that they can safely knock down those buildings and complete the abatement and remediation portions. That work should start in the next, within the next 30 days, barring any hiccups or hangups with the different utility organizations.
I would add that I was walking in that neighborhood this morning. The water company was actually out there doing some of those shut-offs. The landscape is being cleared of all of the overgrowth and brush. And the only thing, the only other thing I would add, this project has been significantly delayed, but there's additional funding that the project developers have been accessing through the Nagatuck Valley COG. So to William's credit, you know, trying to corral all of the various stakeholders involved in this in the short five months that he's been here has been yeoman's work, and we're pretty pleased to see it at this stage. Are questions on this project? And again, demolition will begin hopefully in the next 30 days. We had a kickoff meeting with the, with the team, demolition team, and the property owners. They've assured us that they can complete demolition, they claim, by the end of the year. I know that they have to mobilize for another project someplace else in the city of Torrington, so their goal is to complete this before the end of the year. So with this property, this is a prevailing wage project. So, and that means some of the other ones are not.
So any, any project receiving $1 million or more in state funding is subject to prevailing wage, for which the projects that are, that fit in that category, the city of Torrington has gotten a determination letter from the Department of Labor for each individual project. This Hotchkiss Square project does have a determination letter, and it is a prevailing wage project. We've notified both the property owner, who's the project director, and then also the contractor. Not only that it's a prevailing wage project, but what documentation they need to provide to the city and therefore to DECD as documentation that they're compliant with prevailing wage rules, rules of regulation, statutes.
Thank you. So the only thing I want to add to that also while William is here is, you know, each one of these projects presents its own set of challenges. Obviously, this particular piece of property with hazardous material, with abatement requirements, within the flood zone of the Nagatuck River, so many, like I say, so many moving parts that it really does take an expert like William just to take the lead to say, you know, this is what I needed to do, and this is when I need it done. But this particular project is very complicated.
But there's a path forward, and we'll stay on it.
Thank you.
Yes.
William, the shut-off of the water adding extra costs to it, is there, what is the water piping issue there? I had expected the buildings to have been, you know, abandoned long ago, and.
So, yes, and so let me clarify, it's a great question. To clarify, the water shut-off was a portion of the bid, the RFP bid requirements. When the bids were received, the bid was for, just using a number, $10,000, when the, when the American Environmental AEI, for simplicity. When AEI got in touch with Aquarion, again, after they had gotten awarded the bid, it went from their bid amount, $10,000, to now $60,000 to disconnect the water, which includes the excavation portion to expose the piping, to disconnect the piping, and then the seals and all the other stuff that go along with it. That was a significant increase, so much so that we notified DECD that this was a change. It's been documented in the project admin plan with DECD, and there, there's no issues there, but it's worth, I just put it on here as a note that that was something.
And I would add that shutting the water off at the property line is one thing, but for demolition, it has to be disconnected from the main and the street.
Yeah, so the pipe is totally disconnected, I get. But there's no interruption services to the area.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And on Vinnie's, is all the remediation within the building? Or is there any, like, in the parking lot or surrounding area?
So that's a good question as well. Right now, the abatement work for the asbestos and the lead is strictly interior. It's all inside the building. Once, once the assessment, or sorry, excuse me, once the asbestos and lead are removed, it's a safe environment for the assess, the environmental assessment team to go in and continue their work to find out what other areas. So they're going to do a more comprehensive review of the inside and any exterior areas that they've already identified to drill down to find out, literally drill down to find out if there's extensive remediation work that needs to be done. Rather than piecemealing just the outside, piecemealing some parts of the inside, they're going to do one comprehensive sweep of the entire. And that's just, it's a, it's a progress that I agree with, and it's just, it's just a timing piece at this point. So that, that's what's going on with that. So yes, there will be more assessment work, and there'll be more, but it hasn't been determined whether it's just strictly interior remediation work or if there will be actual exterior remediation work or ground soil remediation as well.
Okay, thank you.
When we get that determination, it will be included in the RFP, what, what the needs are. Those are the project updates I have, and thank you for your time. Madam Mayor, would you like me to move on to some of the good items?
Please.
So the second item that I have, will actually require a vote. I don't know if you need to enter this, Madam Mayor, in a formal way.
So, yeah, before we move into agenda item number four, which is a resolution, are there any other questions on the status, project status?
No, but there's another exhibit with 16 properties. So I'm really curious about the Church Street Dam because it's held by the land trust. Okay, can you explain what's, why it's on this list?
Okay, so, I'm sorry, that's the next agenda item. Any other questions?
That's a separate agenda, okay, I thought connected to this.
That's all right. So, and the only other thing is, so as Councilwoman Rouette pointed out, the project description for Vinnie's Restaurant, and, and I realize it's so much easier to do a cotton paste or, you know, copy and amend. The Sophia Building is also referencing the project description of the Hotchkiss property. And not included in the Sophia Building is the Railroad Square project, which is the Community Challenge Grant that was awarded for the Sophia Building, included $778,000 for Railroad Square, just to give the council an update on that. We are, our engineer has worked with SLR, Final Design, intend to get this out to bid before the end of the year. That is for the pedestrian pathway, for lights, fencing, the railroad platform, and a canopy that would kind of be a nod to the old train station that used to exist there, the parking lot behind Christmas Village, and some trail work and site work where originally the plan was to site Ski's Diner. So that, while it's not in these project updates, is certainly part of that grant that was provided for the Sophia Building. Any questions on that? The goal with that project, by the way, is to have a shovel in the ground in the spring. All right, if there are no.
I'll just add to that, plan to work from my office to work with Public Works and Engineering to compile the same report and just give a consolidated report on that. I didn't prepare one today because there wasn't anything other, anything tangible to report.
All right, so court press and council is telling me that your question does include, oh.
It does include that property that you're asking about. I apologize.
Oh, yes, it's this exhibit.
It's part of the Brunswick, okay, all right. Did you hear the question?
I did, yes, and I can answer on that. So this is a great question, the second time, this is now the third time this has come up since I've been working in the city of Torrington. The first time it came up was for an adjacent property. An LEP said, what's going on with the Church Street Dam? So I had to do some digging. It is on the, this top list solely because a Phase 1 assessment was done there at some point and filed with the state of Connecticut, DEEP. That's the determination I got from DEEP. I don't know any additional information beyond that. The individual who, the LEP who contacted asking about why is there a Phase 1 on that responded back to me after he had done his Phase 1 work and said, I don't know why anyone did a Phase 1 there. So that's the two times I've dealt with Church Street Dam. Now the third time, it's on the list because DEEP has it recognized by some, some form of reasoning that it is under review by an LEP. I don't have additional information beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I noticed that that's from part of the EPA funding source, and I'm wondering if we went into Rose Ponti's old files, if we might find the answer in those old files. I can, I can work with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, let's move into item number four. For purposes of discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 143-257, authorizing the mayor to submit response to the DECD Innovation Cluster Grant Program with a proposed grant application of $24 million for the property located at 70 North Street, originally the home of the Torrington Company slash Excelsior Needle Company and Dymax Industrial, Dymax at Industrial Lane, as described in Economic Development Director's memo dated August 21st, 2024.
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ivene. And I'm turning the floor back over to William.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I do have a presentation put together. It is, it is robust. It's intended for the members who are working with my office on the Innovation Cluster Grant. Any graphics on here, credit to Richard Lopez. Just want to put that out front. So the Innovation Clusters Grant Program, I'm going to click through slides just to get to the relevant material because I don't need to overtake your time. The state of Connecticut initiated $100 million over five years for innovation clusters. Basically, an innovation cluster is a campus-style, campus-like setting where it creates some synergy, some collaboration amongst businesses and organizations, through public-private partnerships, just to innovate and drive the industries that are growing in Connecticut. And you can see a list here, biotech, financial technology, insurance technology, advanced manufacturing. Key point is advanced manufacturing, especially for the city of Torrington, and that's where our focus is going to be. So developing what we're calling Team Torrington, which is a technology in advanced manufacturing in Torrington. Team Torrington is really two things. It is a public-private partnership between businesses, the city of Torrington, and some nonprofit organizations to be leaders of this growing movement, this innovation cluster movement in the city of Torrington to drive innovation, to drive, drive collaboration, and to, to drive a community feel for what is one of Torrington's major success stories, which is innovation, technology, and advanced manufacturing. The second component is the physical structure of building state-of-the-art, advanced manufacturing facilities in Torrington, of which we're working with IRG at the 70 North Street property to construct these state-of-the-art, advanced manufacturing facilities that are, build the suit for those firms, those businesses that are looking to occupy space that need those, that, that ability to expand their operations or to start new in Torrington. So those two components are critical. Here's the mission, and just, and just like real broadly, it's, it's to get, get advanced manufacturing on the map in Torrington through this innovation cluster, through this campus-style center. And I'll, I'll just use the word collisions. It's the ability to create those serendipitous collisions of thinking and collaboration amongst businesses, amongst leaders, amongst low-level skill workers that, that, that drive innovation and drive development. This is the breakdown of key stakeholders within Team Torrington right now. So DECD, the city of Torrington, Dymax, FuelCell Energy, IRG, the Community College, ADD, and the Workforce Investment Board. It's a combination of the property owner building the space, the businesses developing space and being team leaders for bringing in that collaborative spirit, and then also the workforce development component that drives highly skilled people who are already be employed in advanced manufacturing positions. The wording of the resolution incorporates both 70 North Street and Industrial Lane. It's, the intent is that those businesses, like Dymax, which is one of the stakeholders, you have, they already have development plans in place to expand their business operations and bring on upwards of 30-plus employees into their business structure up there on Industrial Lane. They shouldn't miss out on the opportunity for this expansion and creating collaboration. So they're. They shouldn't miss out on the opportunity for this expansion and creating collaboration. So they're partnering in a team leadership aspect, not so much moving to Seventy North Street aspect. And I think that's an important thing that we're going to convey to the DECD in our application is that this campus-like campus-style setting at Seventy North Street incorporates all advanced manufacturing and those looking to come to Torrington, uh, not just those located at Seventy North Street. Um, you know, here's the the roots of the city of Torrington, just some cool graphics again, but you can see all those things that are outlined there, but it's built on this identity, this legacy of being innovative and and uh, you know, being a global leader in in manufacturing. Some history, and I think this just goes to the mythology, the romantic idea of what Torrington is and what Torrington has been. And since the day I've known Torrington, these organizations, these businesses just get thrown at me left and right in a good, positive way and a mindset of like, this is who we are. And then I think to myself, like, why aren't we equally talking about those organizations that are flourishing and world leaders, global industrial, industrial leaders in their, their, uh, their, their manufacturing, you know, world? The future is now, and the question I pose to each of these stakeholders, I'm just going to jump ahead a couple, but how big of a flagpole do we build? So the ultimately what this looks like is the two components I mentioned, the team leadership, also the physical structure. The physical structure at Seventy North Street, the part of the construction there is to build and install a fuel cell uh, generator on the site that provides all the power for the advanced manufacturing facilities and also opens options for virtual net metering for the owner to utilize virtual net media, metering as a income revenue source, but also to provide um, alternate sources of energy to the city of Torrington through the virtual net metering component. Threw a lot of information at you. I had a breakdown in the memorandum, uh, tried to give it as simple as possible about what the overall budget kind of looks like.
Thank you.
Um. I, what you have in front of you, total fifty-four point one million uh, is what the total project kind of looks like. The twenty-four million grant is what I'd like to request from DECD. One thing that I didn't mention in the slides, but is on the memo, is that there is a match requirement of one-to-one. The manner in which the city would meet that requirement is through the investment dollars of IRG, uh, through loans from, well, a loan from CT Green Bank, which can be facilitated through Fuel Cell Energy, and then Enterprise Zone corridor tax rebates, which can be funded through DECD, where eighty percent of the property, increased property value can be reimbursed through DC's Enterprise Zone program. That's where the matching funds would come from.
Okay, questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Uh, thank you. From the screen, we have Councilman Cavanero.
Yeah, I was wondering, when you showed the slide of the stakeholders, you have four stakeholders, including Community College, correct?
It would be five, including Community College, six includes City of Torrington, but yes.
Okay, um, would, would our, would our high school and middle school be considered stakeholders in that uh, feeding Community College, the curriculum at those schools would theoretically be reconfigured to align with what we're trying to do at at the Community College level? I mean, should they be in, assuming this as stakeholders, this would be a regular uh, set, ongoing set of meetings and and discussions with these groups, correct? And would, therefore, would the high school and what it's doing with its curriculum and advancing its curriculum in ways that align with these needs, would they be included as uh, key players here?
Yeah, that's absolutely a fair question. So, um, I guess the the easy answer is yes, right? Uh, the.
Easy answer, yeah.
Yeah, so the goal of Team Torrington as a concept is to grow and expand and not be limited to just the ones that are on the screen here. However, and this is a, I think, a hard caveat, however, for the purposes of responding to DC's RFI, the stakeholders that you see here are the core component stakeholders for the purposes of RFI. I, I think it's granted, your point is is well-taken that uh, the high school is a feeder towards the Community College, towards four-year colleges, also for immediate job entry. Uh, I think as far, so wha- what I've built uh, in collaborating with these uh, organizations on the screen is partners that are are in it for this RFI response. The manner in which the RFI response happens is the city would respond, put in an application to DECD. DECD evaluates all applications that they receive, and based on the applications that they review, they will then invite partners to apply for grant funding. So this is not technically applying for the grant funding. This is submitting a response to the RFI and what our project looks like, what our team looks like. And a component of the response is that expansion portion of bringing in other stakeholders, uh, of which the high school, I think, is a valid point. High school, the high school uh, in coordination with ADD Vance, absolutely is a stakeholder in that job development, job creation portion.
So all you're really asking for is a resolution to reply. I mean, I, any opportunity we can secure funding from any source, state, federal, um, so I would be in support of this resolution.
Right. And again, as you heard William say, this is just to requi- uh, to respond to the RFI. Um, I agree with you, um, applying for grant funds. It's always important for the council to recognize what is the commitment or match that is required. As you heard William say, it's a one-to-one match, you know, so knowing, you know, when we do apply for the grant, how we're going to find the funds to match that.
Do we have them or we don't? So.
Twenty-four million.
But at least it's, you know, we're putting ourselves out there.
Correct.
Every opportunity to do that, particularly now that it's a clear view from north. I mean, there's no building there at this point. People are asking, you know, what are we doing?
Right.
It will be nice to be able to reply to constituents and say, you know, we're looking to partner with the state and and private to develop this property.
Right.
I love the fact that the fuel cell would be, I would think the state would like, you know, that as a response, that it would be, all the energy would come from um, from that source. So um, just wanted to say I would support the resolution and that opportunity.
I'll just add, last night I was sitting with my wife at dinner, and I said to my wife, we did a lot of work into this. I'm going to meet with the county council tomorrow. Started getting these inhibitions of they're not going to really, not, not this council, but DCD is not really going to support this. It's just, uh, you know, it's just a pipe dream. And then I sat back in my chair and I said to my wife, no, this is happening. This is happening, even if the state doesn't get on board. The leadership and the stakeholders that have already expressed interest are on board. This is happening. That's my passion.
A dream, you know?
Yes.
Uh, I, I think this is, you know, this is a essence of Torrington. Um, you mentioned it, the manufacturing history of our community is is strong. Um, and I think, you know, I just look at it as more revenue, or hate to say, increase our tax base.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yes.
You know, as.
Provide jobs.
Absolutely. So all positive in my mind. Um, and hopefully the state will consider Torrington as partnering with them in this opportunity.
Yeah, I, I also agree. Uh, this has a wow factor to it. It's fantastic. I, I just love the list of partnerships in here, collaboration. Uh, and what what we could do with that, using the the best of our industrial uh, arms here already in town to uh, advance this project. So, uh, it's really appealing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? And I'll call this motion. Uh, it's a resolution. I don't need a roll call, do I, for resolution? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? All right, uh, William, you still have the floor. So before you uh, leave the podium uh, to the council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of twenty, of, excuse me, two twenty-five Wyoming Owner LLC and grant a tax abatement for certain real property located at two twenty-five Wyoming Avenue in accordance with the city of Torrington's tax incentive policy as described in Economic Development Director's Letter dated October fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
They're moved.
They're moved.
I hear Councilwoman Ruette, and I heard a second from Councilman Oliver. All right, the floor is open. You want to?
So council members, thank you for your time. Uh, I did provide um all of the attachments, uh, but in true William fashion, left them on my printer, did not bring them with me. However, I provided tax, the the tax assessors letter, the city planners letter, tax collectors letter, that the property is all in compliance and and meets the tax incentive policies recommendations and requirements. I provided a analysis of what the taxes would look like in three different scenarios, one scenario being that no changes were done to the property and taxes were maintained in perpetuity at their current assessment rate. What taxes would be like if no, if the improvements were completed and tax incentive abatement was not provided and it was taxed at the full redevelopment rate? And then the third is if a, the renovations are completed and a tax abatement is put in place or that is compliant with the tax incentive policy and what those three scenarios equate to. Under this request, under this application, the personal tax would not be eligible for the tax incentive policy. So that breakout is a separate category. Uh, and so you have in front of you what those three scenarios look like. Also, uh, on the call today are Akshaya Bhagara Bhargava, apologies for the pronunciation, who is one of the general partners, uh, and he's present. Uh, his partners are are present as well. I did not bring their list of names, which they would be willing to answer any questions about their project as well.
You know, for me, it's mostly, you know, the discussion about the tax abatement in these seven years. Do we have other? Do we have any other, you know, projects that were developed that have gone out that long?
Yes. Yes, um, quite honestly, um, all of the abatements that we have, um, that the council has approved in the past have been seven-year abatements. That is the policy. It's been the policy in the city, um.
Two thousand and five.
Thank you, two thousand and five.
There is one other version of abatement, but it's only for the downtown district and non, and only for housing in downtown district, which is a five-year plan. This one does not comply with that.
Keystone, I think, is the um, is the most successful um, example. They had the seven-year abatement. They completed their construction. Uh, they are now beyond their seven-year period, and they are one of our top ten taxpayers. So these um, abatements do incentivize development. Um, and uh, we do have a few others that um, have been granted under the same policy.
In discussions with the property owner, uh, who is the developer, the in, the tax incentive as laid out in the tax incentive policy would enable them to complete the renovations and then also stabilize the unit to the fifty-seven units within the timeframe of of less than eighteen months. Um, the, that stabilization will, you know, i- i- ensure a steady flow of income, that the business remains successful for a long period of time, whereas meeting stabilization with the full uh, tax rate would would challenge, will create challenges to their business model, business plan, I guess.
So just his I'm not talkative tonight, but.
You are.
I know, just, um, so William, I'm just curious in terms of the history of the developer. Um, have they made, done these developments in other areas in Connecticut? Um, that we could um, sort of see their success?
It's a good question, Councilwoman Ruette. I do not know the answer to that question. Uh, I could defer to Mr. Akshayav, provide a response.
Uh, good evening, members of the city council. This is Akshay Bhargava, and uh, yes, we have done the development of similar properties uh, with other partners that are on the call. Uh, we have a property in Arizona that is an assisted living property, uh, as well as one in California uh, that are uh, in operation. Uh, and Arizona, one is kind of seven months into the stabilization phase as we speak now. Um, and then we have done other development on renewables front, uh, where we have gotten abatements from the cities in Massachusetts and uh, is a prime example where they give twenty years of abatement, and we have fulfilled those, and we can give you the references if required.
Thank you. Other questions?
Uh, this uh, particular uh, location, just a little history, it's has not been used for a while, correct?
That's correct, since two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, so this plan actually puts it back into usage on a fairly short term uh, with some long-term aspects to this development, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
I think there are downward, downward flowing economic benefits to it as well to uh, increase, I'll use the term bed space, though that's not the right term in this assisted, this is an assisted living, in this care type of facility where people can access. Um, families can access this long-term care opportunity, and it creates some downwards, downstream economic benefits to those families to have stabilization in their own personal lives, but also uh, reduces burden, increases um, the employment in the uh, healthcare sector as well, uh, looking to bring on upwards of thirty um, staff members. So there, there are some additional benefits that are aside from just providing the taxes.
Thank you.
William, what's the timeframe for renovations opening?
So I'll, again, I, I, I have information, but I want to defer to the developer because they have the most up-to-date information.
So uh, that we have, we have got the zoning, we have started the renovations, we expect the renovations to finish it uh, by Q one of uh, twenty twenty-five, and then it'll take us twelve to eighteen months to stabilize the property. But we have an aggressive schedule to get there.
Other questions or comments?
That would be my answer too, just.
My comment is that I like this use of the tax abatement to restore this building and put it back on the books in a very positive manner.
Yeah, you know, as an aging community, there is an increased demand for this kind of um, facility in the city of Torrington. So, uh, you know, we look at these things, job creator. Uh, it increases the value of the property one hundred and eighty-five percent. Um, it's seven years, but it isn't seven years of tax abatement. It's not even a tax abatement at all. It's technically just a deferral of the tax increase. So we're never going to receive less than what is being paid currently. It's just those increases uh, would be incrementally restored over a seven-year period of time.
Very good.
If, wait, I'm sorry.
And these numbers aren't solid numbers. So if there's another assessment year coming up, these numbers may change.
Right, and I talked to the assessor's office. I talked to the assessor, and that was her recommendation to me to use these numbers for now with the understanding that two things could change. The assessment value could change, the mill rate could change. Uh, so there are some factors and some fluctuation in there, but I think generally for guidance purposes, these numbers are uh, I think valid for making decisions on. That answer question?
I was just going to say personal property too, because depreciation, so that could change as well.
Yes, so that, yes, that would change. That's not something I factored into my analysis was the depreciation. Uh, so the number that you see as a total would probably be less. Uh, but tha- tha- that's over a long period of time. That's assuming that no. less, but that's over a long period of time. That's assuming that no more new personal property is brought into the facility. So there's a lot of adjusting and factoring that goes into this.
Thank you.
Before I call the motion, to anybody in the Zoom room, any questions, comments? All right, then I'm gonna call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
You're done.
Excessive amount of time.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna move right into item number six. I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee and the WPCA Administrator to approve payment application number three for the Brightwood Avenue Sewer Replacement Project to yield industries in the amount of $251,707.45, of which $168,988.55 will be funded by ARPA. That is the general ledger account, department and account line item, and the $82,718.90 will be coming out of Fund 490. Do you read that motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Second by Councilman Iveyne. And the floor is open for discussion.
Is that project going?
Ed is in the room.
Lower than we anticipated. Run into a few problems. More ledge than anticipated. Some of the, there's a lot of utilities in that road. Wish I could say, wish I could say it was done faster, but it's taken longer than anticipated. We're coming to the end, though.
Okay. Does that change the cost outcome?
It somewhat changed the cost, yeah. There's been some, there's been some change orders.
Okay. Yeah, understood. So there's a lot of ledge in there that had to be taken out to accommodate the piping, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
It's amazing, the work that was put in 80 years ago when that was put in, the way the guys, you could see the way the ledge that was put back and stacked in the trenches. The guys working by hands, it was incredible.
Yeah.
This one was all done with chisels and hammers.
Yeah, can you imagine?
Yeah.
Yeah. Literally like four feet in ledge, they, they chiseled out and put the manhole inside, built it inside the ledge, just chiseled the circle out. You know, we're talking trenches that are 18 feet deep.
Wow.
Can't imagine.
That area.
Yeah. So, yeah, slow, but getting there.
Yeah.
And I think those neighbors will be glad to see this project end.
Yeah, them neighbors have been great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, at night, the road outside the post office has been blocked off. Is that part of this project or is that a separate?
That's separate.
Okay.
That's
That's the gas line?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, other questions or comments?
Great. And you're gonna sleep much better once it's over?
Yeah, I'd be happy.
Good, Ed.
All right, if there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving into item number seven, again with the WPCA, I'll entertain a motion by the city council acting herein as the Water Pollution Control Authority to approve a request of the WPCA Administrator to accept the quote from Air Temp for the replacement of three heating coils in the operations building. This will be paid from WPCA Capital Reserve Fund. Air Temp Mechanical is a vendor of record for all HVAC repairs for the city. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Is there a second? Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item eight, I will entertain a motion to award the purchase of a 2025 Polaris Ranger XP 1000 four-by-four utility vehicle with lighting package to Chaves Brother Management LLC of Boca Raton, Florida, in the amount of $41,426.99. Funding for this purchase will be paid through the opioid settlement fund as further explained in Purchasing Agents Letter dated October 18, 2024. This is pending, of course, Board of Safety approval.
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions? I think the only thing that I would add to this is the reason for funding this through the opioid settlement funds is, as many of you are aware, there are a number of remote locations in the City of Torrington where we have homeless encampments or people that are living off the grid. And for an emergency response, a lot of these locations are inaccessible to emergency medical service. So providing a utility vehicle that is equipped with patient transport as an add-on to this was the rationale for funding it through opioid.
So it didn't necessarily go through the Vehicle Replacement Committee, right? Because it's not using any of those funds?
That is correct. Although I do think that for the next vehicle replacement plan that gets approved for the next budget cycle, this should be added because it does have a life cycle. Once, you know, once it's reached its maximum life, it will have to be replaced.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Do we know what that lifespan is? Just that, you know, it's off-road, so it's a little bit rougher and tougher than our street vehicles.
Yeah. Off-road, a little rougher and tougher ride. And the more trails we develop, the more likelihood there is for us to be able to use these for those emergency reasons. But I don't think it's going to have hundreds of hours a year. I think it'll be a much shorter amount.
Is there any special training required to basically to do an off-site rescue like this? Are we array-equipped to do this, I assume?
So the police department would not only develop policies, and these are the questions that the Board of Safety usually asks, they would develop policies on training and operations. Usually when you have a specialized vehicle like this, the training is specific to teams, special ops or operational teams. But also, we would be looking to cross-train and make sure that our fire department was also trained in it.
Okay.
You may, I have a question?
Yes, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, why was, how did we end up getting this from Boca Raton, Florida? It just seems, I'm just curious how we went all the way to Florida to get this?
So I see that the purchasing agent is on the call, and I don't know, Penny, if you want to try to answer how this bid process worked. No, it wasn't. She's coming. I can't unmute. I'll walk down the hall. Thank you, Penny.
She's unmuted.
Another vendor had submitted a bid proposal. Unfortunately, they did not submit their bid bond, and so they were deemed non.
There was only one other?
Qualifier, non-responsive bid.
Really? So between here and Florida, no one else? This is, in terms of maintenance, where will this thing be maintained?
I'm assuming that would probably be the fleet maintenance.
Yes. So I know, Emil is in the room, Councilman, and he did say fleet through our own fleet maintenance program.
All right. All right. That's all, I just always would, you know, no, just curious why no one in the state of Connecticut could provide this, but so we have.
You know, and so, as we know, anything over $10,000 is put out to bid. You know, there's bid specs that are put together. I think that our purchasing agent and the police department worked on what those specs would include specific for this emergency use. And then that bid is put out there on a nationwide basis. So anybody in Connecticut had an opportunity to bid on this, the fact that they didn't, or if it was a Connecticut company that did bid but did not provide the proper documentation to be a qualified bid, then we're left with, you know, the next, whoever else is on the list.
All right, I'm satisfied. Thank you, Mer.
Thank you.
And again, just to clarify, it's pending approval with Board of Public?
That is correct. Board of Safety has to approve the purchase as well.
Okay.
Good. No questions for Penny? Thank you. Thank you for staying so late.
Thank you.
All right, then if there are no other questions, I'm gonna call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, staying on the police department, is there, you know, my screen isn't showing all the participants. Is anyone from the police department on this call? I know the chief and deputy chief, I think, are at a conference. All right, so then, item number nine, I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee IT Director and Police Chief to approve the replacement of several computer workstations and monitors within the police department. The contract is to be awarded to Dell Technologies Corporation. This is 20 desktops, 40 monitors, and at a cost of $25,411 within the adjusted and approved amount of the ARPA Committee. Again, this funding source is ARPA funds.
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, and second by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions on this? I would only add that this, I believe, is only 50% of what they needed to replace. But the thought process was, you certainly want to stagger your technology supplies. You don't want all of them to be the same age and need to be replaced at the same time. So I think that the police chief and the ARPA Committee were very diligent on considering this. If there are no other questions and comments or comments, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 10, I will entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for the purchase of two 2025 International six-by-four plow trucks from Allegiance Truck of Hartford in the amount of $601,416, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated October 11, 2024.
They're moved.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. I think the only thing missing from this motion was it was also the recommendation of the Vehicle Replacement Committee to do this. So the floor is open for questions, and Emil is here to answer.
Are we taking something out of commission with these two purchases?
Yes, we'll be taking out the current six-by-fours that we have in service right now to replace these units and replacing these units.
Okay. And what were the options? We picked international here, were?
Yes, international came up with a new design for the engines and exhaust system, which has been a nightmare for us with the current vehicles that we currently have in the state, and everybody else has gone through it. As you may or may not know, that we are part of a class X lawsuit against the old design, and that's where we stand right now.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just, you know, keep in mind, you know, that vehicle replacements, we have people with far more experience than myself, Glenn Royals, and of course, Emil has always a justification for, for these purchases. So it's an interesting committee to be on, happy to let somebody else be on it. No, thank you.
Happy to let that pass?
But no, he does a great job. He's always really trying to find a lot of efficiencies with the monies that are available, and they stretch out vehicles to a point where it surprises me how long they have been on the streets. So grateful for the conservative approach to, you know, using this money.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Moving on to item 11, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for the month of September 2024.
Some of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Second by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments on the report? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I will entertain a motion to release the liens listed on Corporation Council's memo, excuse me, dated October 21, 2024.
Some of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Ruette. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list, dated October 21, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Iveyne. Any questions or comments on the list or the tax refunds? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorizes sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated October 21, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Second by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Going to the department heads in the room, anything to add this evening from Economic Development? Okay, all right. Anything from the treasurer's office this evening? Thank you. Anything further from WPCA, Ed? We have Tim Cody in the room. Anything from Department of Public Works, Street Department? And Emil, anything further from fleet or vehicle maintenance? Anything from the city clerk's office? I was shocked when I came down at 10 o'clock and there was a line out the door and down the hall.
Did it work out? Did everything go smoothly? Okay. First time through, they were done.
Yeah. Corporation Council.
I'm just, want to say I'm excited to be able to participate in the trick-or-treat event this Halloween. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, so he's gonna really save more comments. So, so the, that being said, I'm gonna move on to item 16, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members. I heard Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I'll start it, yes, from Councilman Kevin Arrow. Anything this evening?
Nothing, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Anything from Councilman Oliver?
Uh, no, mayor, thank you.
Councilman Waldron?
Uh, nothing from me, mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Ruette?
Um, nothing, mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Spino?
I just want to say thank you for providing this Blight Task Force breakdown. I look forward to spending some time reviewing it.
Adjusting it? Yeah, yeah. So for the council members that are participating remotely this evening, Councilwoman Spino has asked a number of times over the past few months just for a little bit of an update on the Blight Task Force work. What I did provide, and I will scan it and email it to you, is just a thousand-foot highlight review of what happens and where we are with Blight. Our Blight, I originally did ask for this to be an agenda item, and then had to contact the city clerk's office and have it pulled. Our Blight Enforcement Officer is not available this evening to do the presentation, but we'll put this but we'll put this on an agenda as an agenda item, and then she can answer questions after you've had a chance to review. But, you know, the highlights are active enforcement cases, 47 cases, cases scheduled for an appeal hearing, I think we have three of them pending appeals.
This week.
Yeah, this week. Cases closed due to compliance, over 108 since 2019. And the total number of liens, net of expenses, since 2021, are $384,320. So a successful program on a number of levels. Obviously, we don't really want to collect money from anybody, particularly for blight. We don't want blight. But I think that these fines provide, or prove to provide, pretty active compliance, and where there is no compliance, a foreclosure action, a settlement, and the property owner comes to the conclusion that maybe they don't, they aren't suited to own property in the city of Torrington. So a success, a successful program, to say the very least.
Yeah, if I can add, as we went around with the police recently, it was the most asked question in the neighborhood groups that they wanted to know what was happening with certain blight cases. And then the second most was, you know, the school building projects. But it was interesting that the blight that they were identifying around their neighborhoods was a cause of concern for multiple levels of reasons. It's just not to look at the site, but also, you know, think about the well-being of the occupants.
Absolutely.
And I would agree. Many events I've been to recently, that's the number one thing I've been approached about.
That's interesting.
I have something to add a bit. I think, because I think, Councilwoman Spino, you had spoken about constituents complaining about properties that had stuff piled up on their front lawn. And I think we'll, we have a blight meeting this week, and we can talk about that. But I think we'll have to work hand in hand with Public Works because we do have a bulk waste pickup program. And it's, because I've seen the same thing, is I've driven around town, and it looks, it looks like some places, maybe our apartment cleanouts, and they're just dumping everything outside. I don't think the bulk pickup program is intended for that. But I think, you know, we can talk at the blight meeting about how aggressive we're going to be. Because the first step is to send a notice of violation that says, "This is the blighted condition. Take care of it by a certain date," or citations, which is the money part, will start to accrue. But I would encourage you to, when you hear your constituents talk about that, I think I said this last meeting, there is an online complaint form they can fill out, so we know what they are. Because at this point, I think it's sometimes us randomly seeing them as we drive around town. But it would be helpful if you have constituents who have situations like that in their neighborhoods, they need to let us know.
Yeah, enforcement for blight is complaint-driven. So we really are relying on those neighbors, if they see a blighted condition, to report it to us. What we're finding is, a lot of neighbors are reluctant to do that. They really don't want to complain about their neighbors, or they certainly don't want their name attached to that complaint. So what we try to do is, we try to work with them as best we can. If it's a situation where they want to draw it to our attention, and then a member of the Blight Task Force, which I've provided with you, for you, the members of that committee, although I did neglect to include our Economic Development Director, who also sits on this committee. You know, that we would try to look at those properties through the varied lenses. And we look at them holistically. Do they actually have three blighted conditions? Because blight isn't just a pile of tenants' furniture on the front lawn. It is, there have to be three conditions, and those are written in our ordinance, and they're written in the statute. So the Blight Enforcement Officer does have to go out and look at those three. But when we discuss each piece of property, and she brings back a report and presents to the committee what the findings are, we also look at what other additional considerations need to be made. Is it tax delinquent? Are there appurtenances to the property that the Tax Assessor's Office wasn't aware of? New sheds, a garage? The Fire Marshal and Building Official also look at that. Is it more than a blighted condition? Is it, are there structural issues that make it dangerous for an occupant? So blight is a complicated animal. Our blight meetings, I always say, anything that goes more than 59 minutes, I feel is unproductive. We should shorten the agenda. But these meetings never go less than 90 minutes and sometimes two hours because we do have to look at everything. All of this, all of these departments are critical, including Torrington Area Health. Sometimes a blighted property has an enforcement issue on it because of lead paint inside the building. So a really, at this point in time, I think, a well-oiled machine in receiving the complaints, sending out the enforcement officer to do the assessment, reporting back to the committee, and looking at this property holistically. For the properties that do end up being recommended for litigation, Corporation Counsel's office then has, I think, the hardest task because now he really does have to prepare the case for court, defend the actions that the city is taking. And even those can be as complicated as, you know, it's not just blight. There are zoning, non-compliance zoning issues. I think the most recent complicated and stressful one was when you learn that there are 56 pigs on a piece of property with less than, it was just an acre of land.
Technically, that wasn't a blight case.
No, but, but there were blighted conditions. We just, yeah, we went headstrong into the zoning.
Which is actually the subject of one of the hearings we have this week.
Right.
So there's enforcement going on there, separate and apart from the pigs.
Yeah. So you can see 56 real pigs on an acre of land, which also included some wetlands. So every, every case is complicated. And as you hear constituents say, "Well, what about, you know, that house down the street where the shrubs are overgrown?" It's not enough to say that's blight. But if the shrubs are overgrown, and there's three unregistered vehicles, and, you know, peeling paint, you know, and the garage is caving in, now we've got something to talk about. So, so those are the, those are the tricky things that we have to deal with. But our Blight Enforcement Officer is doing an amazing job, and I think our committee is very thoughtful, but stern. So it's good work that's happening.
I'm sure the neighborhoods are happy that the city's taking action.
I hope so. You know, we like to think so. Sometimes, you know, we just, it's heads-down, get the work done. Obviously, the reason for the fines is that a blighted piece of property, or a piece of property, or a property owner that's harboring 56 pigs does have a significant impact on the value of the properties around it. So taking strong action in cases, we have taken a few houses. And in those situations, you know, either did a demolition of the house or put the house out for resale. And those, again, are success stories because you either end up with a nice little pocket park in a neighborhood, like Newfield Spring Road, or you flip the house over to somebody who's a more responsible property owner, like High Street. So it works. And yeah, I do hope the neighbors are happy. Any other questions? Yeah, we're good. Ms. Torrington?
The question of some neighborhoods having problems with rats.
Yes.
You started, pulled together a team to review that. Can you talk us through that?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So you heard me, or you saw where I put in writing, "11 years as the mayor of the city of Torrington, I never received a phone call about a rat problem." In this, this past summer, we got a few phone calls from neighbors in the area of Brightwood Avenue, you know, in the North End. And then this past couple of weeks, and I was bringing it to the Blight Committee, sort of anecdotally saying, you know, "I'm hearing complaints about an increase in the rat population." And it did come up a couple of times in the Blight Committee. Then, two weeks ago, the neighborhood up on Jarden Street went very public with the concerns that they were experiencing, which I will say publicly, it is courageous because I think a lot of people, there's so much stigma with finding a rat in your yard or a rat that breaches your house, and the trauma that goes with that. So this neighborhood, they started talking among themselves and realized this was not, you know, a one-off at one residence. It did include a few. They went public. I immediately mobilized with Torrington Area Health. Any calls we were getting, we were referring to Torrington Area Health District. They would follow up. They would visit the property. They would talk with the property owner. They would go through what the property owner should be doing to mitigate the problem, what options they had. If it was a commercial piece of property, there was a more robust inspection of the commercial property. And what we were finding as we were having these conversations is that this is, this is all over the city. It is the East End of Torrington. It is, you know, the end of Winston Road, right before you hit the Winston Line. It's in the end of Harwinton, at the Harwinton Boundary. It's downtown. It's the West End. It's the South End. So clearly, there is something that's going on that has increased this population. So I met with Torrington Area Health District and our Animal Control Officer, who had also been asked, you know, "What is, what is Animal Control going to do about this, or what should they be doing about it?" We decided that we needed to pull together a task force. And it is going to be staff. It'll be a staff committee. Torrington Area Health Animal Control will bring in our Public Works Division. I think, I think, Mr. Cody, you probably even have heard some of the complaints out there, particularly when road crews are out. Then, and will bring in, as needed, experts, you know, some of our pest control companies in the city of Torrington. We will reach out to the University of Connecticut to see if there's any, I want to say entomologist. I don't think they're entomologists. There's some other specialist in this. A ratologist, sounds like a rodentologist. Reached out to the city of Hartford because as I was hearing all of these complaints, I was reaching out to the other municipalities that had been in the news earlier in the spring and summer, West Hartford, East Hartford, East Haven. There were two or three others. So I started reaching out to those mayors and selectmen to see what they've been doing. Hartford has a really good model that they've just implemented. So our task force will have a meeting with their rodent enforcement officer. I do believe a question about demolition, and whether or not any of this was a result of demolition of properties or construction, the answer is yes. You know, if you disrupt the nesting place or burrows of rodents, whether you're under construction, roadwork, demolition, yes, there will be some displacement. So in speaking with those other municipalities, they did share that they have adopted ordinances. Ordinances that have parameters on if a property is vacant for more than 180 days, and a demolition permit is pulled, or a redevelopment permit is pulled, that there would be some expectation for extermination services to happen before the permit is issued. So I do think this council, when we talk about what are those citywide policies that we can do, I do believe that is one that would be a recommendation that comes out of the task force. We might even want to get a jumpstart on that. Then, we're using data. Torrington Area Health has been the responding agency to the complaints. They said that they have a database of all the addresses. We're going to take all of those addresses. We'll use our GIS system, do a heat map as to where the complaints are coming from. But we'll also then populate an overlay map that'll show us where construction, demolition, and roadwork is happening. So it can be overlaid where the complaints are. But also blight complaints, complaints about debris, yard waste, being left too long in a yard, or garbage. Because, and also include in that any complaints about chickens in the neighborhood. Because chicken feed and chicken droppings are known to attract rats as well. So hopefully, with all of the data we collect, we create these overlays. We can probably find some common themes, you know, and maybe a couple of them. Because I'm a proponent for saying, you know, we could go out there and say, "Here's what you need to do to eradicate your property." But if we don't get to the root cause of the problem, they're going to be eradicating that problem on their property for a very long time.
My quick read on it, you can't just do it one property at a time. You need the whole area to buy into managing this problem. So you just can't be this one person. It really is a bigger widespread issue.
Which is why I liked the Hartford model, because what they did is, they would take the complaints in, but they would ask the neighbor, the neighborhood. So if, if, if I'm calling and my complaint is on Prospect Street, the, the expectation would be that I would get a petition from the neighbors. And that now you have a real congregation of properties that are impacted. Hartford did employ, or does employ, this, this technology. It's called Burrow RX. Burrow RX, as in the prescription. And what it is, is it's a, it's a small generator that uses liquid smoke, and the smoke is discharged into the burrows to deal with the issue without risking rodenticides, poisons that are left out for pets, or that second-generation poisoning for, you know, other predators that might feed on a poisoned rat. And that's part of their citywide model. So a lot for us to consider. And of course, all of the information will come back to the council with recommendations on what's an appropriate level for a city response. And education and awareness has to be a piece of that. I will tell you, I think that there was some misinformation in the newspapers. I read the newspaper, and one of the impacted neighbors said they were waiting for the city to pay for their property, extermination at their property. I, I need to go on record. I am not proposing to this council, or to a Board of Finance, or for a budget purpose, that there be any taxpayer funds, thank you, used for private property pest control services. But if there is a decision to do a citywide service that would be controlled and done, just as you suggest, you know, it's impacting an entire neighborhood, and it's about the boroughs, and the city can somehow develop a policy or a program, that I am certainly willing to advance. But payment or reimbursement for private extermination services is just not in the, not in the picture for us.
Understood. And Greg, well, I appreciate you taking this on. It's one of the most unusual things I've ever seen happen, so.
The only thing I will tell you, it's, and I find it very difficult to laugh about it. I, I can't laugh about it because it is. It's traumatizing. When I talk to people that are having this, they are traumatized by it. And, you know, people on the other end of town are calling me and saying, "I don't want this to happen in my neighborhood." So, yeah, it is important work. But I think that it's also, we also have to draw the line on what's personal responsibility and what's public responsibility. And the only solace that I took in any of these conversations with Torrington Area Health was, I was reminded that in the late '90s, there was a similar uptick in rat population. there was a similar uptick in rat population. And I don't know that they ever undertook a real analysis as to what was causing it. I personally do believe that our warmer winters has something to do with this as well. You know, where natural weather, a cold winter might shorten the life of a rat or the control. The last two winters have been extremely mild.
Okay, just today's weather is like this.
Correct, yeah. So there's a lot of things to consider. But most importantly, what I expect out of this task force is a recommendation, again, what is your personal responsibility? And what is, what is an appropriate public response? Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you, mayor.
I know, trust me, I wish, I wish I didn't have to think about it or lose sleep over it. All right, we still have another agenda item, and I do apologize. I do need to open the meeting back to the public for agenda items only. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor? Any opposed? To the public, which appears to be all department heads. There being no public, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Bless you. I heard Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor? Were adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.